You want me to read the notice?
I was just asking, somebody has it.
I got it.
You got it?
Yep.
I'll read it. We're all set? Yep. Toby, we're all set? All set, Toby. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So today is, let's see if I get the date right, February 21st, 2019. With the February meeting of the West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. Four regular members are present, as well as one associate member, Mark Wyatt. So thank you for coming tonight, everyone. We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:15. I'm looking at my watch here right now, phone, it's 7:14, just one minute shy. So just before we do get to open up the public hearing here, there is one brief item on the agenda I did want to at least mention. As I think the board is aware, recently last year, we did take a look at the fee schedule. We made an update to the fee schedule. And also, we are working through amending the regulations that we currently have in place for consultant fee format. There's still a little bit more homework that I would like to do on that before I formally bring it to the board for further consideration. I don't know if there's any concerns or comments about those things at this time. If not, I'm happy to sort of table that maybe into the next meeting and then we can dig into it more.
We don't have any problems with, you know, the forms. My concern is the comprehensive permit.
Yep.
That outline. That was done when we first came on the board, when Charlie and I first came on, was done, we had the housing person do it for us, okay? I think what we need, and I know that there's a line, budget line, for technical use, that we, you know, if we need any technical help, I think that we should send that particular part, as far as the 40B, out to a particular person that I have in mind that wrote the 40B handbook. So she knows all about 40B. And I think she would be the best person to review that.
Yep.
We had tried to start that when the town administrator was here, and it never got, it never went through. But I would like to make, see if we can go back to that and send that, at least that part, out to her and have her review it and go back. Because I'm just concerned that if we don't, and we get another 40B, you know, we're going to be a little behind the ball.
Yeah, and that's certainly something we can talk about. And as you know, we're dealing with an interim town administrator, and that may have to go through them as well, but we can work through that, I think.
And we just got, we just got another copy. I talked to Nancy Lucia about the SHI report, and she had contacted DHCD, and she got a copy of it. It's the latest one. And right now, the town of West Boylston is at 8.17%. That's with everything. So we're a little less than 2%. So once we hit that 2%, then we're, we kind of have like a safe harbor. So just to let the board know.
All right. And with that, I see it's just after 7:15 now, so I guess we can start our public hearing here. So whoever is representing the petitioner, JH Energy USA, feel free to come on up to the front table here.
Now, read the notice.
And just before we begin, yeah, let's read the--
Okay. Notice for public hearing, Zoning Board of Appeals, West Boylston, Massachusetts. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Offices, 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., in the Board of Selectment Meeting Room Number 210, on Thursday, February 21st, 2019, at 7:15, to act on the petition of JH Energy USA LLC for a variance from the minimum frontage requirement of Section 4.2 of the zoning bylaws for the division of land into two lots for construction of two industrial buildings along the northeast portion of Hartwell Street, across from the American Legion Post. Record title stands in the name of JH Energy USA LLC, 1285 Bering Boulevard, Spax, Nevada. Copies of the petition are on file in the office of the town clerk, 140 Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. Christopher E. Olson, Chair, and I believe that it was in the paper, two weeks, right? Wednesday, February 16th, and Wednesday, February 13th. So--
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And so the way we'll run the hearing tonight, as we always do, is we'll give the petitioner an opportunity to go through and explain what their request is, why they're requesting it. If the board has any questions, we'll ask them at that point. And once that's done, then we can open it up to the public for any questions or comments that the public may have. And then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chair--
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Because of variance, there's three components of a variance that have to be met. I just want to make sure. The petitioner read what is required that needs to be done for variance to be approved by this board. And just so that you know, and the public knows, these three items, all three of them have to be met. Not one or two, but all three of them. And if they're not met, then the board has the right to not approve the petition. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands from the very outset that there are three components of the variance, and if you've read it, you understand it, then we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Amanda Rish, and I represent JH Energy USA LLC. Here with me tonight is Patrick McCarty, the projects engineer. We are here to request a variance from the minimum frontage requirement under the bylaw. First, let me start off by telling you a little bit about the project, the property, and where things stand today. The applicant purchased this property in November of 2018. The property consists of undeveloped vacant land off of Hartwell Street, across from the American Legion Post. The property is currently located in the industrial zoning district. Since purchasing the property, the applicant has begun site survey work for the property and the development of preliminary engineered plans. The applicant ultimately proposes to construct two commercial industrial buildings on the property, creating two separate lots. Lot one is, as you can see on the plan, approximately 3.2 acres, while lot two is bigger at 13.2 acres. Next, I want to take you through the basic concepts of the plan. The property, as I mentioned, is relatively unique in the sense that the railroad abuts the entire western portion of the property. Lot two also has a decent amount of wetlands there, which makes the property more difficult to develop. The size of the property, which is also one of the components that touches on the variance, is that it's a unique shape to the property. It's a long and narrow parcel. Ultimately, we feel that splitting the property into two separate lots is the best configuration of this property. Both lots meet the minimum dimensional requirements under the bylaw, with the exception of the minimum frontage requirement for lot two, which is 150 feet. Lot two, right now, as shown in the plan, is approximately 134 feet. We also received a comment letter from the planning board that indicates that we may also need to request a variance as to the minimum lot width of the property because of that 134-foot lot frontage. At this point, we're still looking at the bylaw, and we'll review that, and if it's necessary for us to come back and to amend our application or file a new application for a minimum lot width, we will certainly do that. The property we propose to have one common driveway, that's approximately 24 feet, as shown on the plan. Ultimately, we feel that having this common driveway will reduce the curb cuts that are necessary and create a point of access that has less impervious surface area and will ultimately reduce the environmental impact of this project in the town. And for those reasons, this is why we feel that the variance will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The common access driveway will reduce, like I said, the environmental footprint. And we did also have an option of coming before this board for a special permit if we were to keep the lot as one lot under common ownership. But because we feel that this is the best configuration of these lots, and just from a transactional perspective, otherwise we would have to condo-ize the property, it's just preferable to have two separate lots with a separate ownership associated with it. And so Patrick and I are here to answer any questions that you have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from the board?
What are you gonna do, what are you gonna do on those lots?
At this point, we don't have end users in mind for the site. We know that we want to create two industrial buildings, and coming before the board to request the variance from the frontage is really the first piece of the puzzle. We don't have tenants set up, and we would still ultimately need to go in front of the planning board for site plan approval and conservation commission, so this is just the first step.
Yeah, if I could add to that, Patrick McCarty, for the record, I'm sure you all know me at this point. I'm sure you've noticed that on Hartwell Street in the past couple of years, there's been a lot of development with the expansion of the Curtis Building. That was 110,000 square foot addition, and that brought a couple hundred jobs into the town that was a Worcester-based manufacturer, and now they're in West Boylston. Currently, the 127 Hartwell Building is just wrapping up a full renovation and addition, and that's also moving a company, Cogmetics, from Worcester to West Boylston. And they're approaching 200 jobs at that location. When we started the discussion with them a year ago, they were at 110 employees, and now they're at 180 with about 20 openings. A project we're not involved with is the renovation of 100 Hartwell. You can see right now that there's interior renovations going on, an addition going on, so businesses are realizing that it's a good thing to be in West Boylston. It's a convenient location. The town's great to work with, I can say that firsthand. And the tax rate is much better than Worcester, and so the applicant feels that proposing two new industrial buildings here would certainly continue to attract businesses to the town. As Amanda mentioned, we have the conceptual plan that's before you this evening. We did go to the planning board about a month or so ago and just reviewed this plan with them informally to get some feedback, because as Amanda mentioned, there is a provision in the zoning bylaw that the plan could be presented to the planning board under a special permit for an industrial park. So the driveway configuration, the parking, the buildings, everything on the plan would appear the same as the plan that's before you this evening. But as Amanda mentioned, we would need to maintain single ownership of the land and condo-ize it, so you would have essentially the same lines on the plan, but rather than labeled as property line, they would be labeled as an exclusive use area. And each person would own their building, but they'd have to own the land in common ownership. So when financing gets involved, banks, transactionally, it's more work, it's, the title gets more complicated, so it's cleaner from a development perspective to have this as two separate lots. And so that's the basis for why we're here tonight requesting a frontage variance for lot number two. It's approximately a 13-acre lot, and we're about 14 feet short of the required frontage that we would need to have two A&R lots, and that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. That plan is a little bit different than what we're looking at.
Shouldn't be.
Okay, because I don't--
Maybe that's--
Unless you can bring it up here a little bit closer.
Colors help.
It might just be colors.
I'm just curious to see, there's something specific that I'm looking at, that I see on this plan that I'm not seeing on that plan, that's why.
Say that.
Okay. This here, okay, is that parking?
Yes.
Okay. Now, and I've talked to the building inspector about this, because we have a bylaw in this town that says that there is no parking in the front of the building, of a building. That it has to be either on the side or in the back, okay?
Yeah.
So because the building is, you're gonna have a separate driveway, okay, for both pieces, both lots, okay? On building one and lot one and lot two, those two buildings, where is the front, where is it gonna be the front of the building?
Lot one, what is the front? Lot two, what is the front?
Yeah. What's the front of the building?
Well, I would say that the front is where it fronts on Hartwell Street.
No, the building, the main road, where is, main door, where is it?
Yeah, the main door.
We don't know yet.
Okay, because see, the thing is, because the thing is, is that it's all gonna depend on what you consider the front of the building. If this is gonna be the front of the building, that's one thing. If this is the front of the building, then you have to come to the ZBA for variance for that parking lot.
Right. So I understand what you're saying. I think that, you know, the building commissioner and I would have to review that, but as far as tonight, we're asking about the frontage variance. This is just a conceptual plan of how the lots could be developed. So this is by no means--
So what you're saying is very possible that, so you're here about the frontage issue, and it's very possible that after this, whichever way it ends up, that this may not be what the final plans look like. There may be amendments to where the parking is, for example.
Yeah, so this, we would have to do, finish the detailed survey--
Yep.
Prepare site plans, submit site plan approval--
Sure.
You know, drainage calculations, notice of intent, on and on.
And planning board would go through zoning compliance--
That whole process--
Through SPIR and all that.
And so if they find at that time that, okay, let's just, devil's advocate, this is the front of the building, and that's in the front--
Yep.
--of the building, then that would obviously change things. But as far as tonight, the purpose of the discussion is the shortage of frontage for lot two of 14 feet.
Yeah, so that, just to finish up on his point, that's probably a good discussion, like you said, for you to have with the building inspector. It's been a little while since I read that particular section of the bylaw that talks about where parking can be on a lot.
Yes.
My understanding was, I think, more similar to what you said, in that the front of the lot is generally considered what abuts the street.
Yeah, so I would think that--
No matter what configuration--
If you drew a line from the front of the building to the street, then it might be--
Right.
The eight spaces that are in question.
Again, yes. That's my understa-- I haven't looked into it, but--
Right.
So it's just FYI.
And that was in the planning board's comment letter.
Yeah, exactly. That's something that they take--
Do you meet all the setbacks? The 50 feet in the front, the 10 on the side, and the 10 on the rear?
Yes, so if you look on the side of your plan, there's a zoning conformance table. So we're yes, 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 yes for lot one. We're all yeses except for the no on the frontage.
So is JH Energy, are they going to maintain ownership of the property once the buildings are built? Or are they going--
Definitely not.
Or are they going to sell the land and the buildings to these two individual, the two buildings?
I'm not sure how long they'll hold on to the property, but ultimately, they probably will sell each lot to a different owner.
And so if that happens, then they'll have to, then they'll do an A&R to split up the two properties?
So we would do, excuse me. So assuming that the board would act positively on this, then we would prepare, as part of the detailed site plan package, we would prepare an A&R. So those site plans would show this proposed lot line, and we would prepare an A&R plan for endorsement upon receipt of site plan approval.
Could you point out where the American Legion--
It's over here.
They're across the street.
It's across the street from the property.
And that's--
Here's the bridge. This is where the railroad track is. That's the bridge. And you go over the bridge, it's over to the left.
Maple Street is over there somewhere.
Shrewsbury's right, wherever it is. Down here somewhere.
It's off the map.
Off the map.
Off the bottom of the bench by a couple--
You can see it, a little bit in there. Right, here's Hartwell. And--
This is Shrewsbury.
This is Shrewsbury, right here. Okay. All right, so let me just make sure I've got my bearings correct. Let's start with lot one. So that's the one where it has, based on your proposal, it has the minimum--
Can I talk over here or anything?
Absolutely, absolutely. It has the minimum 150 feet of frontage.
That's correct.
The way you've drawn it, the way you're proposing it on this plan. And in addition to that, one of the points, again, that the planning board brought up in their letter, was that that frontage, 150, is maintained all the way through to where the building is proposed.
This gets wider. So it's 150 feet here, and it's 165 feet there, and it's 222 feet there.
Okay, so that lot--
So that lot fully conforms.
Is compliant.
But let's say that we did an A&R plan, that carved off this, only lot one, and just said, you know, nothing about lot two.
Yeah.
There's a statute called infectious invalidity, that if we did an A&R plan, and we created one conforming lot and one non-conforming lot, the non-conforming lot infects the conforming lot, rendering it non-conforming.
Yep.
So that's why we're here tonight. We have to get this variance in order to create the two parcels that we're showing.
Yep.
So lot, lot one, highlighted in yellow, conforms to everything. Area, setbacks, frontage, lot width, the whole nine X. The one shortage is on the front of lot two, we need 150, and from this point to this point is 138. I'm sorry.
134.
Just one more question before I get the other board members to chime in. So beneath lot two, I see the railroad--
Yeah.
--track. And that, so that's presumably land that is owned by the state, by--
Yeah, so it's actually kind of funny. So from here, from Hartwell Street Bridge--
Mm-hmm.
--to this point, the railroad company owns this land, be simple, as a parcel.
Okay.
From this point, continuing along behind the baseball field and behind the South Storage, the railroad company owns a five-foot strip here and a five-foot strip there, and Mr. Fuller owns the piece in the middle.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And who owns the land beneath that?
This is also, this is also owned by Mr. Fuller, but under RJF Properties.
Yep.
And this is the site where the planning board just granted site plan approval for the new LFR chassis building.
Yeah, okay. And so you're making, it seems like part of your case for, you know, why there's something peculiar about this piece of land has to do with those railroad tracks and where they are, and that if they weren't there, you would have the extra 16 feet or whatever it is.
Yeah, we would have continuous frontage on Hartwell Street. So that's, that's part of it. The other thing is that this is, this lot is in the Watershed Protection Act overlay from this perennial stream that runs, intermittent stream that runs along the railroad tracks. So there's a 200-foot and a 400-foot offset from that the DCR has jurisdiction over. So that further inhibits the development of the land. You currently create so much impervious within that area, and so we're trying to pull everything up to the top of the page to minimize the impact to those jurisdictional areas.
Okay, you said that lot one was two acres and lot two was 13.
3.2 and 13.2.
Where is all the land for lot two? Is that all in the watershed?
It keeps going way behind the baseball field and the South Storage.
So is it because, is the reason that you don't have the 150 feet of frontage on lot two, is that because of the limit of the WSPA 200 primary zone? Is that the reason why?
No, so that--
Because I'm looking at the building, and the building seems longer, I mean wider, than lot one, than the building on one. If you're talking about--
Yeah, because you have, you have the 134 feet, I'm gonna say that number wrong all night now, but I got it wrong once. So you have the 134 feet here, it winds out, I think at the narrowest point, it's 165, and then the line comes up here, and this is all lot two, all the way behind the baseball field and all the way behind the South Storage, it just goes on and on and on. But this line is the 200-foot, so you have to stay completely out of that.
Right.
And this line is the 400-foot, and you're limited on creation of impervious area within the 200, the 400-foot. So that's why the building is tucked up and forward as much as possible to minimize that impervious area.
Okay, so, I can't speak without the board, but I listened to the attorney's speech, and I didn't hear anything about the three conditions of, you know, the variance, so I'm a little confused there.
I think that we touched on the irregular shape, is that the lot has limited frontage at the street, and it's a very long, long, long rectangular parcel, so it's a very thin slice of land.
Right, so that's the first condition, that there are conditions affecting the land, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which the premises are located. So we've touched on how lot two in particular is especially unique. The next condition is that the applicant will suffer substantial hardship without the grant of the variance. And we talked about how we could appear in front of the planning board to request a special permit through a different route here, but because of the transactional costs and the way that this property, that we're contemplating developing it, that it's ideal to have the property split into two lots. So that hits on the second one. The third condition is that the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And I talked about the fact how, because lot two is missing frontage, but the underlying purpose of frontage essentially is that you're not creating all these different access points along a road, because we're going to be utilizing this common driveway and both lots are gonna be shared together, it doesn't really derogate from the intent of the bylaw or hurt the public in any way by granting the variance for this 14 feet. So I'm sorry if I kind of jumbled everything together, and that's why I've now, you know, separated it out, but that's how we feel that we satisfy the requirements for the variance.
But this can stay in one lot?
Yes, in theory, it could stay in one lot.
The reason for the variance is to split the lot so that in the near future, they could sell it.
Well, as I said, I mean, I don't want to be coy with you. I don't know what ultimately the property owner's going to do.
Yes.
But they've looked at condo-izing the property, getting financing with banks, ultimately selling it, and that's going to create a hardship on the applicant. And because we weighed all of these factors, and as I mentioned, the point of access is shared, we didn't think that it was gonna harm the public in any way or derogate from the intent of the bylaw.
And I think that would reinforce that, is that taking the property line off the plan, this plan could be presented to the planning board for a special permit, and what you see when you drive up Hartwell Street and look to your right, looks exactly the same, whether it's this plan with the variance or the special permit plan. So that you're building the same thing, so how could one have a different impact on the community versus the other?
But, if you get the variance, you have a good chance to sell this lot, sell that lot, whereas if you get the special permit, you may have to, you can build the two buildings.
That's correct.
But need to hold the ownership, right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you, okay? Hypothetically, okay? If they would, if they would have done an A&R, an A&R from the beginning, okay, and lot one would have the frontage, lot two, because it doesn't have the frontage, would they have been, instead of doing a variance, would they have been able to do a special permit, like we do for residence, single residency, and just approve it because even though he's less than 150 feet, but he'd be more than 120?
Yeah. So that, yeah, you're right. That bylaw is limited to residential zoning, so that doesn't apply, but it's the same idea.
So he does have to ask for variance in my special permit?
Yes. There's no special permit provision in the bylaw with regard to frontage for the industrial zone. That's correct.
And through the chair, and also I do have that, the plan is not clear at this time. So they are requesting a variance for the lot two, but lot one, so on the, it seems like, you know, they may have to come back for a variance because of the front parking. So they are, so the building, building itself and the boundaries and, you know--
Yeah, I mean--
So it's, it's not clear. It's not clear here.
Yeah, 'cause I understand what you're trying to do, I really do. But on the, I'm also, I'm trying to look a little bit ahead, okay? And I'm trying to give you a little bit more advice, because I just want you to understand that there may be another parameter, you may have to come back to this board for something else. But I'm looking down here, total space is required 44, parking provided is 90. So I know that that could always change, but the planning board is gonna tell you how many parking spots you're gonna need. If all of this is, if most, the majority of this property is in the wetlands, I think that the parking is gonna be a real big issue.
So--
I mean, I'm not trying to get off the point, because I know what's exactly-- I mean, I, I'm not trying to get off the point, 'cause I know what, exactly what you're here for. I'm just trying to look a little bit ahead to let you know that, you know, one, there may, there may be a problem with the parking and if there is, you're gonna have, I know that, I'm, I'm almost positive the planning board is gonna say, before we do anything, you're gonna have to go back to the, back to the ZBA and get a variance for the front, for the parking in the front of the building. And that was my question to the, to the building inspector was, what constitutes the front of the building, okay?
And I, I totally agree with you and if that turns out to be the case, then we're happy to come back before the board again, but as you just read, we have 90 spaces proposed, we only need 44. So if these eight or nine spaces became an issue, we can still chop them off the plan and still be in conformance with the parking required under the bylaw.
But if the parking, if that, where the parking is, where you have the parking now in lot one, okay? If that's considered the front of the building, then that parking, you're gonna have to get a variance.
This, I can't see how that would ever be considered the front of the, but even if that is the case, then we'll come back.
All right, all right. What is that, what is, in your definition, what do you think of front of the...
I think from the front of the building to the street would be the front.
I think that's, is it, the building inspector is here, what is the, maybe you can explain?
Does that, does that make sense?
Traditionally, front of a building has been the one, all the doors, windows, lights, camera, action and all that stuff. However, on this particular case, because the frontage, or this address for this building is gonna be on Hartwell Street, that can be considered the front of the building. But that's, that's the address of it. There'll be, I can't even remember what number it was, but do they ever give a number? We say, we say 200.
Right.
There'll be 200 Hartwell Street, that would be the front of the building.
Yeah, 'cause LFR's 160, so yeah, it would be 200 Hartwell and 210 Hartwell, making up numbers.
Otherwise, if you wanna consider this the front of the building, then its address would be along...
Shrewsbury. Which is 600 feet.
600 feet back.
To the east. West, playing my backwards today.
But yeah, but I, I do want to stress to the board that the configuration of that lot isn't really what we're being asked to evaluate tonight. What we're being asked to evaluate is to decrease, is it, whether we wanna grant the variance to decrease the minimum frontage in lot two and then, you know, if, if these plans change, they change, but they're still gonna need to comply with, with zoning at that time. So, I mean, that sort of detailed plan is not before us tonight, I mean, it's, it's good information to have, but it's subject to change. I mean, they, they've, they've certainly, you know, come out and said that and if they need further, you know, relief, they can come back to either the planning board or us appropriately. So I, I just wanna try and sort of simplify the issues to the, the zoning, or the, the relief that's being requested, which is with respect to frontage, basically splitting this now one lot into two. That, that's what's before the board.
Yeah, six, taking 16-acre parcel and splitting it into a three-acre and a 13-acre. We showed, we showed the, the conceptual development of the lot so that in an attempt to convey to the board that there would be no detriment to the public, that this plan could be approved under special permit versus the variance and so that there would be no substantial change in the design of the site resulting from the variance. That was the purpose of showing the developments, but really we could have shown the three-acre parcel and the 13-acre parcel with only the, the frontage discussion.
So for me, you know, I think the hardship is, this, this can stay as a one lot, but because of the variance, they have the ability to split it and then sell it. That's the, that's the kind of...
Right, it becomes two, two independent lots.
Two independent lots.
Yes.
So is that a, that's the hardship they are saying.
Yep. And, and by the way, like when, when we, when we do have before us requests for a special permit to reduce frontage in the residential zone, which we've heard several times before, it's the same, it's the same theory, right? That somebody is coming before this board and asking to split one lot into two and maybe the second lot only has 110 feet of frontage, for example.
But also too, that means that whatever the, whatever the, the frontage is, has to meet all the way back to the, to where the building is.
That's right.
And I don't know if that does.
It does.
It does.
It does, okay.
Yeah, we checked, we checked that today.
Well, I have a problem and my problem is this, I can see what the lawyer said about two of them, I just don't see the hardship. I mean, I, I really don't. Like fellow board member Ry said, you know, that if we approve it and then, you know, you can divide it into two lots, you know, two, two separate lots and sell it as two separate lots, I, I don't see what the hardship is, I really don't.
So if I may weigh in on that a little, so let's take a 55,000 square foot building. If you're looking to move your business to West Boylston and you're gonna build a 55,000 square foot building, easily $150 a square foot between site development costs, maybe 200 a foot with, with land acquisition, site development costs, building construction, interior fit-out, so you're looking at spending $10 million to build a building and move your company to town. If you had the option to buy a piece of land that you owned independently and you controlled 100% that you could build your building on, or if you could buy one that you had to condo with the guy next door that you may know, you may not know, you may get along with, you may not get along with, which investment would you feel more comfortable in making? And that's, that's essentially our argument, is to, to entice somebody to do this kind of investment in town, it's a cleaner, more attractive transaction for them to own their lot independently and be really the master of their own kingdom versus having to share that with somebody next door that may have, you know, different business ethics, different up housekeeping and, you know, they wouldn't have any, they wouldn't have as much control and, and also the legal, the legal and lending part of it, when it's condoized, it affects the, the appraised value, there's more legal work, it's more involved on that side and so we're, transactionally, it's cleaner to have it as two independent lots and that, that's, I think, our argument for the hardship.
I, I still think that, that the A and R should have been done first and then came to us and said...
We can't, you can't do...
He doesn't meet frontage.
Frontage.
No, he could have came to us for this, for lot two, for, just for the frontage.
Can't do that.
You can't do that because you're making a non-conforming lot.
You can't, with an A and R plan, create a non-conforming lot.
You have to come here first.
Did anybody go to the DCR to find out about that stream that's flowing on the other side of the railroad track?
We know them all too well. We...
How about the railroad, you know?
Yes. Our company did the site design and permitting for the self-storage facility, for the baseball field, for the LFR chassis building, all on the other side of the train tracks and, you know, we've been involved with DCR through the entire process and we've actually submitted a variance request to them that's in process right now to allow us...
So if they turn it down, we're wasting our time.
Um, no, not necessarily because we would, we would have to reduce the impervious area, it, it wouldn't reduce to zero, the building size might go from 50 to 40.
And what about the swamp on the other side of the building?
That's off-flag, that's what this hatch pattern represents. So all of this area here with the, if you look closely on the plan, you can see that the wetlands are labeled H8, 33, 32, so all of that was...
Flows into the reservoir.
Yeah, that was all delineated by Echo Tech, who's a wetlands consultant from Western and Jarvis Land Survey went out and field-located all of this wetland, all of this wetland here.
In other words, that stream is, is clean now. I don't believe it.
It's clean now?
Is it?
Oh, from the contamination?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so there's, Shell has their own licensed site professional, granted this is a little off-topic, but I'm happy to share. Shell has their own licensed site professional that's monitored that site since all the tanks were removed and I, I was honestly flabbergasted when I looked back at historic aerial photos to see how many tanks were actually there at one point. So they've monitored that site since the tanks were removed, they were out on site continually during the construction of the self-storage facility because all the drainage from the self-storage facility goes to an underground infiltration system that's below the baseball field. So they came out and they watched all that work, they took soil samples and they've been monitoring that all along and so those poplar trees that were planted actually did their job of extracting contaminants from the soil, those were planted there, the trees that were in rows were actually planted there 'cause the, the roots draw contaminants out of the soil, it's an interesting concept, but that really worked to clean that all up. So when they were installing the infiltration basin, which was, I don't know, 10 feet, 11 feet deep underneath the baseball field, they, they were able to see the entire soil strata and take samples and they've been monitoring this all along.
I have a quick question for you, it's a little off-topic.
I'm happy to go off topic.
The bridge, the bridge?
Yes.
What's the weight capacity of that bridge?
50 ton.
50 ton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you had to go to, to the railroad, to the railroad and everything?
We found that out through the railroad.
The railroad doesn't own that.
The, they don't own the bridge?
Mass DOT owns that bridge.
Who does?
Mass DOT. It's currently structurally deficient.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
I have the report right here, if you want to see it. From Mass DOT.
Yeah, if you have it.
Just before we do that, are there other questions from the, the board before we open it up to the public?
No, 'cause we'll get a chance to, yeah, talk about it.
Could I have your name also?
Christopher DeVillas.
Anybody else want to... Can I just, Mr., how did you get, how did you get this report? I mean, what is, what is your occupation or where do you live?
I'm an engineer, I'm a landowner at 211 Hartwell Street.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I went to District 3 Bridge Engineers and got that.
Okay. So you're a butt this property?
We, we don't have butted, we're across the street.
Across the street, okay.
Next to the Legion.
Any other questions right now? Open up? Anybody? All right, so...
Not yet.
So we, at this time, we will open it up for public comments, questions. Do you want to start with this gentleman here? Do you have further comments?
You know, my five siblings and I own that property now, 211 Hartwell, and we're not against development in the area, we've been filming with the Legion for, since 1969 and we never had any issues down there. That lane gets developed across the street, that's fine, we're all fine with that. Our big concern is that bridge, it's a single-way bridge. Mass DOT considers it a single-way bridge. That bridge in 1996 when it was placed there to replace the Pony Bridge, it was taken from another part of the state and it was just a temporary fix to satisfy the Legion in 211 Hartwell Street with the current traffic flow that was going over at that time. Talking to the bridge engineers at Mass DOT a couple weeks ago, to change that use to increase that traffic flow and the weight of that equipment that's gonna be coming over there, tractors servicing these buildings, it's actually gonna make that deteriorate much quicker and it's not, it wasn't intended for that. And it's actually unsafe because it's a one-way bridge, the line of sight is horrible. If anybody's ever driven that after a Legion event or, you know, you gotta stop or you're gonna take mirrors off. So I'd love to hear what the developer proposes to, what they're gonna do with that bridge.
You don't have to answer that, Mr. McCarty, 'cause we're not, we're not really, you know, I, it's gonna come up with the planning board and all of that, so, you know, if you wanna answer, you can and if you don't, that's, I, I don't have an issue with it, at least not right now, but when it comes, when it goes, when this goes before the planning board, I'm sure, well, I'll have a question about that.
And also it's based on the, based on the, what kind of business goes in there.
Right, but it's, but the problem is that I see and I've driven over this bridge, it's only one lane, so that means that if there's, if there's traffic, gonna be any kind of constant traffic, then that means whoever wants to get over that bridge, it's gonna be a ra, a race to get there first, you know, so, but that's okay.
Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, that's something we can certainly review and then discuss at the planning board stage.
See, I was, I thought that, I didn't realize that this was, belonged to Mass DOT.
Those two just, you guys are all familiar with the bridge.
You live in the last house? Only one house is there, right?
I don't live there, me and my siblings own it in the trust.
So the last one, right? Well, that's the only one house.
Two also after the bridge.
Thanks for the clarification because like I said, I was under the impression that it, that the, the bridge belonged to the, to the railroad.
Yeah, Mass DOT took it all.
All right. Okay. All right. Anybody else in the public?
Rod, you wanna see these?
I have seen that.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Anybody?
Uh, no, we're looking forward to getting a little more business down there, maybe more people.
Can you just give us your name and your address?
Rick Freeman, I'm representing American Legion Post.
It seems like it's kind of a dead area now.
Yeah, it's a dead area, so if we can get, you know, a little more business, a few more people down there, see if maybe rentals, stuff, start picking that up, keep us in business for a little while longer.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Sir, your, your name and address, please?
Mike Mulryan, West Boylston, 100 Hillside Village Drive. I'm concerned about the, the bridge also. It's a single-way bridge and it crowns up, so we have poor site visibility from both sides of the bridge. So coming up like this, you can't see traffic coming on either side. In a way, as Rick says, it would be good to increase some business down there, get some more folks, that's a plus. On the negative side, if people felt that it was a traffic safety hazard and dangerous to go over that bridge with increased traffic, Mr. McCarty indicated that by the numbers of the development on Hartwell Street, when we put this additional buildings down there, you're gonna increase the amount of vehicle traffic. So that could work in a detrimental manner because of the bridge and the design of the bridge. So that's, it's kind of a two-edged sword, but it is dangerous now with the limited number of traffic that is, that is going over the bridge now. And the way it is, if nothing changes with increased traffic, it's gonna be more dangerous. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I think, you know, to answer that, or to say something on your comments, so whether we like it or not, so they are planning to have two businesses over there, whether the variance goes forward or not. So it's a different concern, the bridge voice. So when it goes to the, apparently, you know, they have to go for the planning board, the site plan review, so on. So that time, the planning board will take a look at it. So what kind of business? How much is the traffic? Will the bridge hold the weight of the traffic? So then the planning board will make a determination, am I correct?
Yep.
And I'm not sure, you know, who is going to, if we needed a bigger bridge, I don't know, who built it? Is it Mass DOT will build for you?
Yeah, I'm wondering whose responsibility it is.
Mass, he's just said Mass DOT, right?
If it is a Mass DOT...
Mass DOT, but if you're changing the current use of the bridge that they put there, if you're changing the use on the other side...
Right.
It's up to the developer to...
To petition, to petition Mass DOT and let them know what their plan is and what kind of businesses are gonna be there.
It would be prudent for the planning board to recommend the developer to have a meeting with the bridge section of Mass DOT before they do any development over there because they have the authority to shut it down.
Personally, if you do that, I'd like to see you guys come to the planning board so that everybody can...
Oh, we have to, there's no doubt that...
No, what he just said, bring in the bridge inspector to the planning board to give the, to give diversion to the planning board, but anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different topic.
Okay, anybody?
Yeah, I don't know that I can get a state guy there, but, if I may, I just, for the record...
You'll have your turn.
Oh, okay.
You set the motion. Well, I, I just, are there any other que, questions or comments from the public at this time?
We'd just like to, Larry Makeless...
Name and address, please.
Larry Makeless of Weston Mass, the Commander of the Post. We would just like to be informed what's going on over there. We've had four or five different people go up to us, tell us four or five different things. We've known three owners of the property now and none of one, not one of them, except for one person, has gotten in touch with me all this time to tell me what was going on. Nobody else, I think they should, as being the butters of this property, should be informing the post what's going on. Don't give us some hang... this property, should be informing the post what's going on. Don't leave us hanging in the air.
Mentioned horseshoe pits.
And we also, 1958, Shell Oil lent us permission to put horseshoe pits over there. And we've been maintaining them since 1958. That's 80% of our profit on the post during the summer. If they take that out of there, I have a contract with one of the persons that I was talking to, when they take all that soil out there to replace our horseshoe pits. But you've got to remember, they're going to be in there before they start construction on the other ones. So, I mean, they're putting us in a bind if we don't know what's going on in beforehand.
Where are the horseshoes?
Where they're going to put these buildings.
It's across the street from there?
Yes. Yes. Shell Oil lent us permission in 1958 to use those, use the property for our horseshoe pits. We've been using them and maintaining that piece of property since.
Yep. He will answer that. He did, he and Mr. Fuller, right?
Yep.
So they did.
They said they would.
In some meeting.
We just like them to be a little more forward with us.
Maybe he will answer that for that.
Yeah, so if Mr. Fuller has stated it in the past, I'll state it again, that, you know, we're 100% on board with helping the Legion relocate the horseshoe pits to their side of the property.
Yep.
My cell phone number's on here. I carry it on me.
Sorry. I got a broken bone on my foot.
They'll call and yell at me, say hi to me, ask how my day's going. I'm always happy to talk to you guys. And, you know, when we did the project up the street for Curtis, I handed out 50 business cards to all the residents of Angel Brook Village and said, if you need me, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, here's my cell. And you can ask them. They called me and I was there. And so I'm happy to do the same thing for you. And I think the board members know that we're responsible in our engineering and development and that we'll follow through on that.
The last person who's ever talked to me is Mark Tomiano, Tomassino, whatever his name was.
Yeah.
He was the only one who's ever talked to us.
Nope. So we're happy to talk to you and we're happy to help you guys out with that.
We just want to know who owns the property, what they're going to do, and come back to us. Don't leave us hanging with all the different rumors that we get.
Nope.
Because you know, a post gets all kinds of rumors.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. And what starts as one thing, by the time it makes its way through the chain, it's, you know, totally different thing.
That's all I want to say.
No, no problem. I'm happy to, I'll meet you over there. We can go over it and make sure everybody's happy.
My number's on the outside of building room. A little plaque there. Call me anytime.
Okay, great.
Great. Any other comments from the public? Questions? Anything at all?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Just hang on one second here. Are there any other questions the board has for the petitioner?
So when are we going to forward them on it?
Let's just, do you have any more questions for them?
No.
Okay. So I did want to just make sure that we get the three, the feedback that we got from three different boards on the record.
Yeah, that's where I was heading.
Before we close the hearing. So the first is, we've talked a little bit about it. We did get a letter from the planning board where they did mention this issue with the, you know, not being below the minimum frontage from the street to all the way back to the building. It can't go below that. And as you've shown on that plan, if this variance were to be granted, therefore creating that lot two, the frontage doesn't get any smaller than 134 feet.
That's correct.
Between the street and, you know, wherever you're going to end up building on that lot. So I think you're, I think you're all right there.
I think we're all right on that one.
Then again, if there's a determination that you're not, for whatever reason, by the building inspector, you can come back before this board and we'll talk about it, I guess, at that point. But it doesn't seem like, you know, based on what you've shown, that you're going below 134 there.
That's correct.
So, yes. So what the planning board wrote, the variance petition that was forwarded to the planning board, does not stipulate a reduction to the minimum lot width requirement in, and they showed that? Which is also, which?
So there's been, I think, some confusion with respect to how that bylaw, Section 4.1.1E, is to be interpreted. Because it uses the term that the frontage from the street to the building should not, shall not be less than the minimum required frontage.
Okay.
But what we're talking about here is reducing that minimum required frontage. So they will no longer, we will no longer require 150 feet for Lot 2, but we would require 134 feet.
Okay, so it says, this is the bylaw, says the minimum lot width, which is the shortest distance between side lot lines, when measured anywhere between the lot frontage and the existing or proposed main building on the lot, shall not be less than the required minimum lot frontage.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And so Lot 2, as proposed, is, the side lot lines are never closer than 144, 134 feet together.
Right. So from here to here is 134. And then at no point from here to the building is it ever narrower than 134.
Right.
So if the variance is granted, I agree with you that we're reducing that requirement to the 134. And so that as long as we maintain 134 or greater, we're in conformance with the lot width by law.
And that's consistent with the way, you know, we've reduced frontage in the past for residential lots. So that seems all right to me. The other point that the planning board made was with respect to the parking in the front. And I think we talked about that. And that'll, that'll work itself out between yourself, the building inspector, and the planning board.
Yes.
So I think those were the two, you know, most substantive issues that the planning board raised. Then we also did get feedback from the Board of Health and Conservation Commission. And just briefly, to get those in the record as well, see if I can find it here.
You have sewer on the, you have town sewer there, right?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. So.
I don't recall seeing the Board of Health one.
The Board of Health, it says, it appears the entire area is on the sewer system. I suggest this be sent to DPW. And DPW made a one-line comment about, you know, not seeing any issue, mentioning that if this means the building is 16 feet closer, but that's not what we're talking about here. So there were no issues raised between the DPW and the Board of Health. The last one is Conservation Commission. There was a comment, I'll just read it out here quickly for the record, from the chair of the Conservation Commission, "At face value, I have questions, but nothing that would interfere with what I suspect would be your decision. But I will have questions when the applicant comes before our board, mainly about the wetlands. At some point in time, they will have to appear before the commission. But my recommendation is that they obtain more definitive plans and go before the other boards first," presumably Planning Board as well, "before meeting with the Conservation Commission." So it doesn't sound like there's any, you know, non-starters there from the Conservation Commission's perspective either.
What, did, did they, did they get a copy of this?
No. So there was, there was a question from a member of the public who emailed the board, asking for information about, well, who is this petitioner? I can't contact them. So the only, the only response was, the petition itself is public. Take a look, whatever information is on there, have at it.
Yeah, because she, basically, they said that they could not find a listing online for the company name and the address maps to several businesses. So, yeah.
So we did receive all three of those records from the three most pertinent boards for this, which we did really love to. So any other comments from the petitioner before we consider closing the public hearing?
No, just to thank you for hearing us this evening and listening to our presentation. And, you know, we appreciate the time that you've put into hearing us. And we appreciate the public that's come out to give their comments. And we see the project as a positive for West Boylston and that we hope that we've made ample arguments to the, to the board and that you would grant the variance that's requested.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from the board before we close the hearing to deliberate?
No.
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, that's the first. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing, none. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's five, nothing to close the public hearing. All right, so we are closed. We'll now deliberate on the decision. Any, any comments from, from anybody? Any suggestions? Anything before we, before we are prepared to vote on the petition before us? Any comments at all from the board?
I still have doubts.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so it seems to me, again, they're proposing, you know, making what is currently one lot into two lots. The Lot 1, as drawn, is, appears to be entirely conforming with zoning.
Yes.
Including the minimum frontage requirement. The Lot 2 that's being proposed, or the one that's highlighted in pink there on the, the drawing over there, that one appears, again, it has all of the requirements that it's supposed to with regard to minimum lot size and all of that, except for the frontage. It is 16 feet short. Now, I mean, I think one of the things that we could consider in deciding whether or not to vote for this variance request or not, is, again, like was mentioned by the petitioner, is the size, sort of the elongated size of the lot. It is, Lot 2 is proposed to be 13.2 acres. Now in the industrial zone, a lot is supposed to be two acres minimum. This is more than six times that, this lot two. So it's, it's a good-sized lot. There's no question about that. The only issue here, again, you know, as we're obviously talking about, is the reduced frontage here. 16 feet short, the, and then just below that, where that extra 14 feet may have come from, you know, would be that area there where the, where the railroad tracks are. And sort of the, the space on either side of that railroad track. So that's, you know, something else that, that, you know, board members could consider. Any other comments at all? Nothing at all? Okay. So that being the case, is there a motion?
Motion to approve RJ Energy USA LLC for a variance for minimum frontage requirement from 150 to 134. The property is located at Westerly Hotwell Street.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so.
And this is a variance we do need.
Yep. So this is a variance, we need a?
Super majority.
Super majority. We need four yes votes for this variance to pass. Anything less than that, the variance is denied. Four or five votes will grant the variance in this case.
Yes will be approved.
A yes vote will approve the variance. A no vote will deny the variance.
Okay.
And the, the motion before us is a motion to approve the variance. So a yes vote says yes will approve this proposal. A no vote says no, it will remain as one lot. Okay, is that clear? Okay, perfect. All right, so we have the motion to approve on the table. All in favor of the motion to approve the variance from 150 feet down to 134?
Yes.
Yes. We vote yes to approve. Okay. Uh, all opposed?
No.
Me, yes.
Okay, so that's three to two. The variance is denied. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this evening, would you consider reopening the public hearing to allow us to withdraw without prejudice?
It's already been voted.
It's been voted. What does, what does the, what does the board think? I mean, we've held a public hearing. We've made the vote. Do we want to entertain withdrawal? Given, I, I.
Is that recent, or do you have another question?
Just to give us an opportunity, so the denial blocks a two-year timeframe on reapplying, unless it's substantially different. By allowing us to withdraw without prejudice would give us the opportunity to go back to the drawing board and, you know, see if we can come up with something else that would possibly make this work.
Is it doable?
If? Yeah, I mean, I honestly don't know. I mean, I, personally, I wouldn't be inclined to go along, just because we've had the public hearing, we've had the vote.
Yeah.
We've effectively made a decision now on this.
I don't know what.
So basically, now that, now that we disapproved it, or didn't approve it.
No, I don't know.
They can't come back for two years.
That's correct. To ask for the same.
Right. If they come, if they want to come back with additional information and a change, then they don't, then the two years. Because we've gone, we've had a situation where this happened.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And.
If, if there is some changes, they can come back?
As long as it's not the same change.
Yeah. I'm confused because you said yes, which the chairman explained was a yes to approve, so.
Yes, because he said oppose, then we said yes. For opposing, I said yes.
Okay. I get, I was confused because you made the, the maker of the motion, I think, is what confused me.
No, no, no. The first time, the motion is always on a approve.
Okay.
Chairman asked, who is, approve, say yes. So three yes. And then who? Oppose. I was opposing. That's why I said yes.
I misunderstood. Thank you.
No, that's why I said yes.
Sure.
I don't think we need to reopen it. I mean, it's, you know, we denied the variance. They can go back to the drawing board. And if they want to change, as long as they don't come back with the same thing, then they, you know, if they decide they're going to come back with the same thing, then they have to wait two years. Other than that, if they go back to the drawing board and come back with something else that's totally different, then, then that's fine.
Yeah, and we could consider that at that time.
Would you consider that?
If there's a different proposal.
That's right. Because it, because it basically states that, you know, you have to come back. This happened at Lost Oak Road. They came back and they tried to change the same, tried to change things. And it basically was the same thing. They waited the two years and it got disapproved. So.
I don't see any. All right, any other?
I disagree. I think we should give them a chance to re-engineer it.
Oh, they can, they can re-engineer. It's just that they can't, we're saying they can't come back with the same thing.
Well, I think they should be able to come back because we've gone through all the hard work. Now it's just technicalities.
If I may too as well, allowing us to withdraw without prejudice really just allows us to start back at square zero, not come before you again with the same proposal. But if we're going to have to go before the planning board and request a special permit, continue on with site plan approval, it's better to just withdraw without prejudice than start with a denial from this board at the outset.
But if you're going to potentially come back before this board with a different proposal, wouldn't you be able to do that even if this weren't withdrawn because it's a different?
You would first have to, you would, we would have to submit. And you would have to vote as a board that we were substantially different from this.
Yeah.
Right.
That you just denied. And then you could take up whatever we resubmit.
Right.
There could be different board members who weren't here for this initial hearing.
Yep.
It just could create this extra level.
I, I understand. But at the same time, I do want to respect the decision that was just made by the, by these five members.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm, I'm not inclined to, to entertain that.
Okay.
You know, withdrawal. And I don't know what other folks are.
For me, and I don't know what is the legal things. This is, for me, you know, when I'm in the boarding, I never came across this kind of situations. I have, I don't know.
Okay. Anybody else?
So we have 14 days to write the decision.
Mm-hmm.
And then there'll be an appeal.
We could appeal, yeah.
And that'll take, that'll be for 21 days. So basically, it's 35 days that the board has. So.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
What's next on the agenda here? What's next on the agenda here?
We've got the vote sheet.
Oh, the vote sheet. Yes, thank you.
Can you, can you make a copy? Give it to Toby. Toby could make a copy.
So if I read, some reasons for regulations, so the bridge inspection, 2017?
Right. They actually downgraded again. Berber told you, it's downgraded again.
Would you be able to get a decent one?
The new report is available.
I've got it.
And what I would, what I would, just a suggestion, that when they do go to the planning board with their plan, have, you know, go with, go to the meeting and just show them the one that, and then tell them that, you know, there's been another one. Maybe you can call them, and maybe, you know, if they know that, if you can explain to them that there's an, you know, that they're going to the planning board and that you need, you know, that copy, they may be able to expedite it quickly for that purpose.
Okay.
Do you have email address? I'll scan.
Yeah, just, just send it to, to, to the West Boylston.
If you give it to Toby, he could...
Email? Okay.
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, let me write it down.
Toby, just make a copy, please.
Want a copy?
Of what?
Okay.
Run it in the copy.
Make sure they're in color, Toby. I want to see the rust.
You want the pictures, too?
Yeah, I want to see the rust.
How many copies of this do we need?
At least five.
What, everybody wants one?
I do.
Is this one color over here? I, I think I may have to go downstairs.
Yeah, you can go down.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing that information. We would have not known that.
All right, so let's see, anything else? Treasurer, financial report, we had that. We're still above water for the year.
I know that it's not on the agenda, but I'd like you to see if the Chair could reach out to Mr. Ali's attorney and find out where, where they stand with the ASBILT and the cost certification for 92 North Main Street. Because once they set, once they give us the ASBILT, then we can request VHB to go out there and inspect to make sure that, that everything is done. Once that is done and with the board is satisfied, then the Chair can petition the Treasurer to go ahead and issue a check of whatever funds are, are left, after all the bills are paid, of course.
Yeah, and I would imagine because we're, you know, because we have a sum of money covering that...
And you said yes.
That, that's going to be motivation for, for them to move as quickly as they can to get their money back.
Right, yeah. Also, too, I don't see, do we, we don't have any money to pay Toby?
We're all right. It's not my reading anyways.
Do you think that that's going to be sufficient till June 30th?
It depends. How many petitions are we going to get between now and then?
A whole bunch.
So it should be enough then.
Okay. Wait till Toby can...
All right. So let, let me just mention, the next scheduled ZBA meeting is Thursday, March 21st at 7:00, the third Thursday of March.
Also to, CPTC, their annual training conference is March, is Saturday, March 16th of this year, 2019. It's at Holy Cross. They have it every year. I've gone to it probably since I've been on the board.
I think, you know, I nominate the Chairman to attend the meeting.
When is it?
Saturday, March 16th. I'll be going, so it doesn't...
Saturday's generally good for me, you know.
Just kidding.
Oh, I know.
They're interesting. They have some good topics. They have, you know, people that make the presentations, they're really good. They serve a good, a good meal.
Yep.
So it's, it's a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it, so...
Anything else?
The only, like I said, the only other thing was, is, you know, if you could work on the forms, that would be great. And also too, as far as the comprehensive, or the comprehensive permit.
Yep.
I'd like that.
The fee language you're talking about.
Now, as far as the, the fees for the, you know, what we charge for, you know, special permits and all that, we've already approved that.
Yeah, that's...
So I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to do that.
Charlie, put it on your, your table there.
It's on the...
Oh, right there.
Oh, thanks, Charlie.
So that's, you know, that's, that's the only, that's the only thing. And like I said, you know, just reach out, if you could reach out to, and then of course, there were some things. Can you give us anything? Do you know anything anymore about this here?
No. I do not.
I should have asked the buildings, but you know if, if he's reached out to the building? Okay.
I don't know. All right. Is there a motion to...
John, second.
Wait, who made it?
Raj made it.
Raj and I seconded.
Dave seconded. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.